All right, we will call this, uh, meeting of the regular city council meeting to order for Tuesday, July 6th, 2021, a day later than normal as we are, uh, yesterday observed the Fourth of July holiday. First item on our agenda is to pledge allegiance to the flag. If you could please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, one of the things you'll notice on the agenda today is, uh, um, Minnesota statute thirteen D dot zero two one, and it allows meetings to be conducted over the phone or other electronic means. However, uh, the health pandemic has been, uh, removed according to the state of Minnesota as of the thirtieth of Mar- of, uh, June. So, uh, now we do have Councillor Buller is, uh, on the line. With that being said, uh, there are much more requirements, uh, for him to be able to vote in this meeting. So, um, um, last meeting, he would have been able to, to vote, but we don't meet the requirements now. So he'll be able to join in in the conversation with the council. He'll, uh, be able to, um, uh, be part of the, the deliberations on items. However, he will not be able to have an official vote. So with that being said, we do have, uh, four members of the city council present this evening. Uh, the first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda, uh, with any additions or deletions. Um, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to delete number three on business of the agenda, Mr. Droba.
Okay.
Um, and in that, I want it forward to the Human Resources Committee for more review.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Deech. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, does that, does four pertain to that as well?
Well, if we, yeah, if this gets, uh, done, then he doesn't have to speak, but he can if he wants to.
Okay.
Um, but I want it removed and, and brought before the Human Resources, so.
Wasn't this specific, uh, item already brought up to the hu- human resources?
It got started there, but it, it hasn't been, uh, finished where they come back to the city council.
Okay. So we have a, uh, motion and a second to approve the agenda with, uh, the deletion of number three.
Yep.
Call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote no. The, uh, it fails. With that being said, uh, we will have to approve the agenda now without that deletion, deletion or with an additional, uh, with an addition. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, uh, as it was written.
You, it, the vote was three to one?
Uh, to have a addition or a deletion to the agenda, it has to be by a unanimous vote of the council to move forward.
I thought it had to be majority.
Has to be by unanimous. It, it's, uh, in our city charter and it is written.
That's fine, but we don't have to approve the agenda either.
Right.
So.
Right.
That's fine. He's, he's asked for a motion for the current agenda.
So that puts us in a pickle if we're not going to approve the agenda. Where do we go from here, Mr. Uh, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, this is new ground for me, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. You know, I, I think the agenda lays things out. I, I don't know that, uh, uh, a failure to approve the agenda, uh, the agenda necessarily means that you can't conduct any business and, and consider things, uh, based upon motions. Uh, you know, I think an agenda, uh, is for purposes of, kind of organizing things and give everybody advance notice of what's going to be there, uh, but I.
May I make a suggestion?
Certainly.
The council still has the ability to approve the agenda with that one on there. When we get to that item agenda, we are more than willing to accept, uh, a motion at that time to, uh, forward it to H R. And then it would be a three-two vote. We still take action on the agenda item. We still look at that agenda item. We don't need to discuss it. It would be the next item on the agenda. And at that point, you would be able to make the motion to move it to the H R committee. We could take a second. And then with that being said, it would easily be able to move to the H R.
All I know is I want it to go to the H R.
I understand that. So if we can approve the, uh, the agenda, uh, as it's written, when we get to that agenda item, we can move it to H R at that time.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the agenda as written. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I can second that for discussion when this comes up.
We have a motion and a second to accept the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. And you said no?
Yep.
Okay. So we still don't have an agenda. So I don't know how to move forward now.
The approval of the agenda doesn't need to be unanimous, only changes the agenda.
Thank you. I, I missed that nuance. Thank you so much. So the motion, uh, carries three, four, the motion, one against. Go to the approval of the minutes. The minutes of, uh, Monday, June 21st, regular city council meeting, the chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Move.
We have a motion by Councillor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Deech. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four, zero. Next, we go to the June 28th, uh, city council meeting. That was the special hearing and the special council meeting. Uh, council would enter, or chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
We'll move.
We have a motion by Councillor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Kraus. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four, zero. Next, we go to approval and, uh, um, accounts payable. Uh, the resolution that sits before you has transfers of $284.03. That's going from the general fund to the lodging tax fund. Uh, we also have, uh, accounts payable, City of International Falls, regular claims of $639,229.77, airport commission claims of $27,549.54, airport, uh, capital project claims of $4,900, and runway reconstruction phase three claims of $912,121.92. For a total accounts payable and claims of $1,583,801.23. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution and the payments claims.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councillor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four, zero. Next, we go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything to the account, the city council that is not on the agenda? Please.
Met with Winseth, the, your guys is, that does all your land surveying and stuff. They were at the Business Park today, and Borderland Auto's got a hundred-foot-long garage with six service doors in it, and they want to give him a thirty-two-foot alley or thirty-two-foot driveway to get into six service doors. That doesn't work. We need to drive over the urban center of a curb and gutter in that area.
I, I don't even know what the process is on that. Ted, what, what is the process?
Ricky, yeah, yeah. What's that now? I, I contacted Kirk and he was, someone's going to be a whole meeting with you concerning both issues. You had an issue with the U P S also.
Yep.
And then my understanding, you bought the other property.
Yep.
So, and there isn't even one there for that.
Nope, there's no one there.
But I sent an email this afternoon, you know, so they can meet with you and come up with, uh.
For that property?
For alternative.
Okay. Well, they never got back to me, so.
Well, I just saw it on about this afternoon, and I went in, you said, right, you said you would stop by, so I sent an email, you know, but it's, it's going to be another month before they start, so. I didn't even know they were taking that.
Oh.
We still gotta, we still gotta go through the ordinance and everything, so it's going to be at least a month before they're going to notice.
Okay.
So.
We'll have a message, but I'm glad you're probably in the next couple of days. Okay, sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question on this though, Ted. Um, we're, we're bidding this tonight. Is that gonna?
First reading.
Is that gonna, okay, it's first reading, so it's not going to affect?
Right, that's what I'm saying. We'll do the first reading, second reading.
Okay.
We've got to advertise, we've got to run, but once we do that, then we can get the paperwork together, get the notice to proceed, and so it's going to be a long, it's not like we're going to start next week.
So, right, so we're not?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
They just told me a thirty-two-foot driveway to get in there, it's like six service doors.
Right, which, uh, thirty-two foot is, is a standard bin dock plate. That's a commercial, that's what a commercial standard is laid out in this spec. So I'm going to hold you, we'll get it worked out.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ricky.
Anybody else have anything to bring to the attention of the council? All right, uh, then we'll go to opening bids. Uh, as Councillor Kraus had just, uh, discussed, we have the first reading of the contract ordinance for Twenty Second Street Reconstruction and the Highway Lane Reconstruction Project, including Main Avenue South Bid Alternate and Court Lane Bid Alternate. Chair would entertain a motion for the, uh, opening, or the first reading of the contract ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councillor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councillor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I will vote yes, motion carries four, zero. Next, we go to the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, and this is the, uh, allow and approve the necessary expenses for the mayor and councils to attend the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Summer Conference, uh, 2021 in Alexandria, July 29th and 30th. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Move.
We have a motion by Councillor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Deech. Any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four, zero. Next, we go to new business, uh, consider the resolution, uh, consider to rescind Resolution twenty-eight, twenty, proclamation and declaration of an emergency due to the COVID-19 health pandemic. Chair would entertain a motion.
We'll move.
We have a motion by Councillor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Holden. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So we are hereby rescinding the resolution and going back to business as usual?
That is correct.
Thank you.
With no other discussion, Chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries four, zero. Next, uh, we have the audit of financial statements for the year ending, uh, December 31st, 2020, as prepared by Schlitter Winner and Company. Uh, the council, um, received a report from Schlitter and Winner today. Uh, we did get a clean, un, um, modified, uh, rating, the highest you can get. Uh, we did learn some information, uh, today that, uh, is harsh. We're still lo- losing money in our, uh, our ambulance fund. Uh, with that being said, we did, uh, finish this last year higher than the year before. Um, financially, we just lost money in the ambulance. Uh, Chair would entertain a motion to, um, approve the audit financial statements for the year ending December 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Chair would entertain, or I'm sorry, we have a motion by Councillor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Holden. Any, uh, any discussion, any, uh, things that you would like to add, city administrator?
No, we've covered it, thanks.
Okay. With that being said, uh, Chair would entertain, or would, uh, call the question.
Aye.
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 I will vote yes, motion, uh, carries four, zero. Next, we have the, uh, to approve a letter between the City of International Falls and the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local Forty-Nine, Public Works and Administrat- Administrative Office Staff. Councillor Holden.
I'd like to make the motion that, uh, this gets sent, this particular item, number three, gets sent to the Human Resources Committee for further review.
Okay, we have a motion to send to, um, H R. Do you have, uh, as one of the members of H R, do you have a, a date that you would be able to meet on that?
I would, uh.
Actually, hold on, we, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
We have a second.
We have a second by Councillor Deech. Okay, for discussion, would you guys be, when would you guys be able to meet to handle this particular issue?
Oh, Mr. Deech is chairman of the committee, and so.
I'm, I'm open anytime.
And I'm open anytime, so.
Great. Uh, I don't know if we need an attorney there or not.
Well.
This could be a little touchy.
I'd like to have the people that we, yeah, and I'd like to have people that we can, uh, you know, the B A from the Forty-Niners, uh, really, this affects more than just the Forty-Niners for down the road.
Okay.
So, um, I'd like to have, you know, we'll come up with our list and, and, uh, take the time to sit down.
Okay. Are, are you open? Can you have things together for Thursday?
Thursday, yeah.
That doesn't meet the seventy-two hour requirement. Friday would.
Friday would? Friday?
Friday's fine.
Okay.
Friday, uh, morning, afternoon, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Thirty, ten o'clock.
Seventy-two hours.
Friday, Friday wouldn't make it.
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
Okay.
You gotta go for Monday.
Monday, all right, whatever.
Monday, ten o'clock.
Yep.
Seventy-two hours from now would be Friday at about ten to six.
Okay.
Monday, ten o'clock.
Forgot that our meeting's on Tuesday because of holiday. All right, so Monday, at what time, I'm sorry?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Right here.
Human Resources will meet here.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four, zero. All right, next is a request by the union business agent to address the city council, Dan Manick. Uh, before this happens, I would like to have the, uh, city attorney discuss, uh, the, how the city council should proceed on this.
Well, it's concerning because it involves, uh, issues and, and employment issues with a current employee, and there's confidentiality, uh, things. I, I think it would be better to be handled in closed session, uh, and, um, and if they want to, uh, you know, if, if, if there's a desire to, uh, there's, there's no problem with the union representing, addressing the council. I would be concerned with, um, participation by council members, uh, in, in a public setting. Um, this might more appropriately be handled, uh, through a committee of the whole, uh, although that, that would be public as well, um, or, you know, some kind of private session. My, my advice would be, uh, we listen to the union representative as to what he has to say, uh, but I would, uh, caution, uh, councilmen against, uh, making statements or asking questions that might lead to the disclosure of confidential information in a public setting.
Okay, thank you. And I, I did receive a, uh, signed letter from two city employees that, uh, has given the, um, ability for Mr. Daniel Manick to speak on their behalf today. With that being said, I'd like to give those to the city attorney, flip them over, make sure that we're not going into anything, uh, be legally liable in any capacity.
Well, I would say that, uh, each of the employees involved has given the permission for, uh, Daniel Manick to address the city council, uh, and he certainly, uh, may do that, um, but they, uh, haven't given permission to any city council members or any city staff to publicly address their individual concerns.
So it is your legal opinion that, uh, we can allow Mr. Manick to speak to the city council, but the city council is not to answer questions or not ask questions or, um, make statements at this time?
Certainly not anything, uh, that could lead to the disclosure, uh, of confidential information. The, uh, you know, safest approach would be not to ask questions because you're not sure what kind of response it's going to elicit, um, but, uh, you know, if, if it's not involving, uh, confidential matters, uh, you know, I guess that would be, uh, up to the individual cultures. I'm, I'm certainly not going to tell them that they can't speak or can't ask questions from a legal standpoint. I think it would be preferable, uh, not to, uh, ask anything without perhaps first clearing it with me.
Okay. All right, uh, with that, um, with that opening, Mr. Dan Manick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try to keep it real general, like, I have to ask any, but, questions, documents. So, um, I'm Dan Manick, I live in Cook, uh, and we've got about a fifty-year, four or fifty-year relationship with the city, Local Forty-Nine, and we think, we think it's been working great. So I am here on behalf of two employees, and I'm, I'm going to do my best not to even mention names, so I, I, we don't get into, you know, I don't want to cross that line. It's just, in general, I, I wanted this to come before the city council, um, through this whole process, we met with Public Works Director and Administration, the city administrator twice, and we, we kind of, I hate to use the word negotiations with something this, this delicate, but we kind of came to a button heads where I requested to be put on the agenda just for this reason, too, um, and I, and thank you for, for moving the previous item to the Human Resource Committee. I think, I think this is bigger than just myself and two people sitting in a room, um, will impact the whole city. So, uh, so our, our view of this lot, of course, we are unit, we, we represent these guys. Uh, this happens in other, other cities, townships, public sector groups and, uh, counties, and we, we do have, I'm going to share with you some documents that other, other cities have, have drawn up, and the city presented the guys with the, with the proposed agreement, and one, one, one of the agreements was signed. Uh, we, we countered with, uh, again, with a proposal, um, the proposal that was presented to us had no end date, or when, when they get their C D L reinstated, they would be able to apply for the next opening. Without any, without knowing when the next retirement, it could be three years, four years, that they'd have to wait for, to get their old positions back. So most, most of the contracts we have, after, after the twelve months, if they get their C D L, they're reinstated to their old position. What the city was doing was creating operator position, uh, I mean, labor position, excuse me, um, and the, the rate of pay was $20.01. So one of the employees would be taking about a thirty-three percent wage cut for that year, you know, and, and we felt, not just as a union, but, I mean, with compassion, I thought, that's a pretty big penalty, you know, so both employees were, were okay with the $20 at the labor position. It was just real hard to look at, no, no end date to when that would happen. So what, what we were, what we were proposing was on reinstatement of that C D L. They, they'd assume their old positions. And just so you know, um, the C D L is for driving truck, that's a dump truck, the tandemax dump truck, or, or the low boy for, for moving excavator. You don't need the C D L to run a rubber tired back hole, uh, uh, the trap hole, sweeper. There's so many pieces of equipment in the city that these guys can still operate without the C D L. You know, and I did ask if the, if the city would be interested in going back and looking at their time slips to see how much time they actually spent driving the truck as opposed to the equipment and coming up with a rate of pay proportionate to, if they work 2,080 hours a year and they, and they drove truck for a hundred and fifty hours or 200 hours and the rest of its equipment, work on a pay cut there. So there, there is more options. So what was presented to the guys just seemed kind of harsh, just with compassion, outside of my union hat, these, these are, these are your community members. They're, they're being held to a higher standard, but I don't know what the community standard would be if, if everybody that's getting a, a DUI pretty much has the option thrown at them, you're going to lose your job, you know, so the city's, the city's going out of their way to create this labor position, but it's just real tough to agree to that with no end date. To go, to go from where they're at now, one of the employees is almost a ten-year employee, to go, to take a thirty-three percent pay cut for how long? Two years, three years, four years, five years? It's almost unsignable. So we, we, we hope that the Human Resources will look at the documents we have, and, um, and if, if, if we are allowed to sit at that table, thank you very much for that opportunity. It's, it's even more than the five minutes I have here for this point. So, um, you can use, you can lose your C D L for many reasons. One of them, the guy who was telling me, I didn't even look at it that close, if you have your C D L and you're working for fifteen years and all of a sudden you are, you're diabetic, you can lose your C D L for that. Are we going to fire somebody for having, because we have diabetes? Um, I, I would ask that, take time to reconsider, you, you have one, one signed agreement that's probably on the table. We would like for Human Resources to address at least an end date. Uh, in one of the meetings, it was mentioned, when, when I came back, I had a private meeting with Public Works Director and Administrator, and, and one thing we changed from their agreement was that end date. And I was, I was told that, why should we reward these guys for what they did? I've been talking to these guys for the last two weeks, you, you, you can't believe the pain these guys are going through, economic, emotional, the hardships. It's always been out there, you'll see it on the news, hey, the, the average cost for DUI for somebody, thirty, forty thousand dollars. Now you start taking a thirty-three percent cut in pay on top of that. There's a couple of very humble employees here that they don't want to be here pounding my fist on the table and saying, get my job back. They know this is their fault, we all know that, but we have to have some compassion. You know, if somebody loses, loses an arm or a leg in an industrial accident due to some carelessness of their, their own, are we going to throw them under the bus like, well, it's their own damn fault? I mean, this, this is more than just, hey, the job description says we need a class B, job description says we need a class A. These, these are hardworking community members, and I, and I hope you believe they are good employees. Um, so I do have some documents, uh, and we would like Human Resources maybe to take a look at. One of the documents I have to share is the, um, job description for the, for the labor. The labor position has been listed in the contract forever, but there was never a job description. So I, I, I would hope that Human Resources maybe enlist some help from one, one of the union stewards to help, because some of the job, the job description might cross into maintenance one, you've got, we've got equipment operator, maintenance one, and, and now the labor position. We just want to be careful that we're not crossing into the maintenance one job descriptions, you know, so please take a look at that as well. It will be hard, part of the package for these guys is, they are accepting, and they would be accepting a new job that hasn't had a job description previously. We want to be careful when we build that job description, not be in too big of a hurry, let's take a look at it, make sure it, it is truly a labor position, and, um, and we don't start moving into maintenance one territory. So I have, I have seven, but do I have enough? Mr. Buller isn't here today. So what, what you will have here is, uh, each one of, each one of these guys had a, had a separate agreement, so one could sign if they wanted to, the other could not, you know, they, they weren't bound to be held. the other could not, you know, they, they weren't bound to be held, held together. So, I thank the city for giving each employee the opportunity to go that route. So, this is what, what I'm going to present to you, if you share it with your council members and Human Resources. It's each of the agreements that, that we would hope you would consider. And then there's just some information, a few other contracts that we have in other cities. I highlighted, for instance, there's the city of Burnsville, there was a Santee is in here, Hastings. Just some language that they have, and most of our memorandum understandings that they, they've created proactively, waiting for this to happen. I, I would hope that going forward, we, we should probably address this in a future contract, so we don't have to stumble over this, you know. It, it, it's bound to happen eventually somewhere in time, so. And then I do have a copy of the job description. I, I believe it's the same one that you said, this is one you shared, I'm sure that's still.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So, there's, there's, I think there's six of those, too, so. That's all I have. That's just a request. Could I share this information?
Can, can I just get, have you give it to the city attorney and make sure that it's something that can be shared with us, so that it doesn't have names and go into the record?
And this, this posting came from, this was created by the city. I was expecting no action. Hope that Human Resources would consider it, other than the one, even if you want for the employee that signed the one, you could sign under a little bit of, I don't think about, but that can be.
Mr. Mayor, would it, would it be more appropriate to just have those put together as a packet that are given to the members of the Human Resources Committee at a later date?
And, and Mr. Mayor, I guess one of the issues I have here is that I, I think if, if this is distributed to all five of the council members, it would be considered a public document, and this contains the names of the employees involved, which I think should be stricken. I, I don't see any problem with the, with the rest of the documents, but I think for privacy purposes, it would be more appropriate to have that stricken, so, so maybe.
It would be, if this was shown, there is separate.
All right, and, and I would, I would be fine if, if the staff and the city attorney wants to take those names out and then just put them in our boxes and available later in the week, so that we'll have those documents, to make sure that HR has them inside their, their, their packets.
Prepare them for that meeting?
Yep.
Yep.
And I would highly suggest to Counselor Buller, in the event that he's going to be able to be in town for that meeting, and if he is, that would be wonderful, and I think it would behoove both yourself and me to attend that HR meeting. That way, we can all be knowledgeable on, on the situation, because I, I've heard, as, as bad as it is, I've heard more about this situation today than I have in the recent past. So, I appreciate you coming, and I think that we have a good game plan moving forward. So.
Thank you. And I felt it important that this, these are, these are your, they, they just needed, we showed a little compassion.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you say that's at?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have authorized the police department to use Smoky Bear Park for national night out activities from 4:00 to 7:00 on Tuesday, August 3, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion for that authorization.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries 4-0. Next, consider approving an entry permit to use Boise premises. The premises may be occupied and used by permittees solely for emergency purposes. Chief Manasa.
Mayor. Uh, so very recently, with our emergency management planning, and of course, our big disaster drill coming up, we did some planning resources through, and then also through CN Rail. We were fortunate enough to be donated some equipment from CN Railway. The optimal, optimal place to store that happened to be on Boise property or PCA property, so we have a land use agreement in place from PCA. The nuts and bolts of the agreement are they're allowing us to keep a shipping container, a 20-foot shipping container on their property, and access it for emergency use only. The city attorney has reviewed that agreement. I believe everything was satisfactory with him, and again, just the brief summary is that we are basically bypassing the normal entrance procedures to enter their properties. We're not clearing with a guard. We're, we're assuring them that we have the proper insurance liabilities in place, and maintaining safety in their, their protocols while we're on their site. So, I, I believe the agreement is, is in place and good to go, and I would ask that we approve that agreement.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve that agreement.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consider sewer easement agreement with Crescent Drive Mobile Village LLC. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this matter was brought to my attention by Kelly Myers, and out in the mobile home park, out towards the airport out there, there's a sewer easement when the sewer was put in, and now they are proposing to put in a, a bigger mobile home than what was originally there, would have a deck on it, and a portion of it is going to be directly over the top of the sewer line. And so, what was come up with as a solution is, is permitting them to do that, provided that they agree that if we ever need to access that, if there's a problem with the sewer and we need to, to use the area above the sewer that's interfered with by the mobile home, that they, at their own expense, would move that mobile home so we could access the sewer. And if they didn't do it within a reasonable period of time, the city could move it, and they'd be responsible for any costs incurred by the city. And that's been signed by the owner, the new owners of the Mobile Village, Crescent Drive Mobile Village LLC, and this is being done with the recommendation of Mr. Myers. Is it in the best interest for the community? I would urge the council to approve it and, and sign it. It's been signed by the member and president of the LLC.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion for the sign, signing of that agreement?
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries 4-0. Next, we go to a resolution supporting governmental intervention in the sale of the International Bridge. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. Discussion? Since our last meeting, I've had two conversations with Mayor Call from Fort Francis. Now, it is official that the American side has sold. With that being said, there is more concern than ever for what's going to happen with the Canadian bridge. Some of the, the keynotes in this resolution, which this has been formatted back into our, our, the way that our resolutions are, but this is, a lot of this information is what came from Fort Francis. The key things that we need to look at is now if the bridge is, is to be sold. The very last whereas on page one, in 2006, there was a public meeting, and it revealed that the once brand of the bridge only had 15 to 20 years left, and it needed to be replaced. At then, it was about an $8 million cost. If, as I understand it, and the conversations I've had with Mayor Call, those funds that were supposed to be charged to go back and forth over the border was supposed to be used for maintenance of that bridge. And now, if one side of the bridge has sold, without knowing what, what agreements were in that, that sale, we're under the belief that $375,000 approximately was given to, in bridge tolls, to both the American side owners and the Canadian side owners. That money was supposed to be utilized for bridge upkeep. Now, here we are, about 15 years into the future, where that $8 million cost needed to go into it, and the bridge sold. But now, there's no funds to fix that particular bridge. The reason it's concerning is, this isn't a governmental entity where we can, you know, just raise, raise taxes, or, you know, ask for federal support. This is a privately owned bridge. So, the concerns that both I have and Mayor Call has over in Fort Francis is, if the, this bridge is not upkept, and we continue to charge monies to go across, is it going to be safe in another 15 years? We both believe that it's safe now, and we're no structural engineer, but if the work needed to be done within 15 to 20 years, and there's not going to be the money to make those repairs, and we're not able to intervene, that's a concern. I also have learned that there are Canadian rules and restrictions that they will be able to intervene if there was to be a sale on the Canadian side. So, as of right now, that is something that they are looking at over there, if there is a sale on the bridge, of intervening and getting some stipulations done. As of right now, this is just a resolution, saying that the city of International Falls agrees that we need to start looking, and making sure that the best interests of people going across the border and the safety of that bridge move forward. I did share with Mayor Call the information that we all know, but was brought forth by Counselor Kraus at our last meeting, about our comprehensive plan looks at potentially moving the bridge, and she is, she is open to that. She thinks her council may be open to that. However, it's a bigger conversation than the city of International Falls and the city of Fort Francis. That brings in the Ministry of Transportation, the Minnesota Department of Transportation, and both federal and, and Parliament on their side. So, it's a lot, it's going to be a conversation piece. This is maybe one that we're working on for the next couple of years, but this is just one step to making sure that we have a safe border between International Falls and Fort Francis, and that we don't get price gouged to be able to see our loved ones across the border to pay for maintenance that's been deferred over the years. So, that's the intent of this resolution, and I have to say, it's been great talking to Mayor Call. This is the first issue that we've actually discussed at length. I mean, we've talked a little bit over the pandemic, but both of us were kind of doing our own thing, but this one is something that we can work together on, so it's been very nice. With that being said, the chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries 4-0. Next, we have a resolution approving Amendment Two to the Department of Transportation grant agreement. This is agreement number 1044886. Don't we do this every month? Chair would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Both.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. Discussion? Is this not the one we did last month?
No, it is not. It's a different agreement.
Okay. I really thought it was the same one that we had to change one number on last time, and, all right. I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries 4-0. Consider the 2021 License for Dairyland Operations LLC. Doing business as Baskin Robbins for a restaurant license effective due day, July 7, 2021. Tomorrow, I'm sorry, yes, tomorrow, July 7, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion for that license.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden. Any discussion? I'll, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries 4-0. Next, consider a license transfer from Holiday Station Store 380 to Holiday Station Stores 509, located at 1501 Second Avenue West, for 32 off-sale license, cigarette license, gasoline license, 12 pumps, and a restaurant license effective August 19, 2021. Chair would entertain a motion for that license transfer.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Questions? Discussion? I guess, I guess I have a question. Is, I know that this isn't common, because we don't have people transfer or moving, but is it, are we able to just transfer a 32 off-sale license, or a cigarette license, or is that something that they have to go through the state for?
32 will go down to the state for final approval, but you have the authority to do the other licenses as listed.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. I will call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries 4-0. Next, recommendations from the Public Works Committee. Consider the Bolton Mink Proposal to Prepare a Lift Station Asset Management and Capital Improvement Evaluation. Counselor Buller, you want to talk to us about that? Just so you can be part of the conversation today? He unmuted himself. Ah, he doesn't really want to talk to us. All right. Chair would entertain a motion to prepare the lift station asset management and capital improvement evaluation.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech.
Anything to add?
I'm definitely pulling you out for the next one, anyway. Uh, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion. Motion carries 4-0. All right. Next, consider rejecting all the bids for the 2021 crack sealing repair and fog seal project.
We decided that we were going to try and do a crack seal, fog seal program on some of our roads that weren't quite ready for an overlay or a milling overlay. The problem is, the project's too small to get any competitive bids. Most of the companies are in southern Minnesota. To try and keep it down, we, we did a couple of alternates, it just, when we called the contractors, that's what they said. It's, it's for them to mobilize all the way up here, it's just too small. I've already reached out to the county engineer.
I've already reached out to the county engineer. They do about $200,000 worth of the same type of process. So what we're going to do is work with them this fall to see if we can just add our work to theirs, which would make a bigger project and we'd get the same thing. The goal of this is to try it because some of our roads that we did the milling overlay, you know, the reflective cracking we know is going to come back. What our goal is, is in three to five years. Five years, we may be crack sealing hardwood drive. So what we want to try and do is get set up every three to five years, try and do a program like this to try and keep the roads up rather than just let them go to the point where they got to be, build it over there. Though we tried, it's just too small.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to reject all the bids from the 2021 crack sealing repair frog, ah frog, fog seal project.
Make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to come for the council? All right. We'll go to reports of boards, committees, department heads, reports of the city administrator.
The only thing I have, Mayor and Council, is I'd like to thank everybody, especially Public Works, yourself, my office staff for the Fourth of July event. I thought it went very well. Couple little things, but our staff needs kudos. They did a lot of work in the heat and greatly appreciated.
I would echo that. And it was a green staff this year, a green committee. I think there was over two-thirds of the people that sat at the table this year were new and had never been to a meeting, let alone, you know, shared a meeting. So I appreciate everyone that was involved. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I think you've all received the pending updated criminal blight cases. We still have 20 that are open and proceeding in court. We have 11 that have been resolved. Most of those that are still on the criminal docket are due to be in court either this Friday or the following Monday. And Fire Marshal Jared Baldwin, in the last few days, has gone through, reviewed all those and provided me updates and hopefully will make some progress. Some of them, there is good progress being made. Some of them are just basically ignoring it and we're going to have to proceed through the criminal process. But I don't know if there's any questions about specific cases, but that's the update.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the city attorney? I know that you have like a million and 72 things on your plate. I totally get that. I just need to ask this one question and it's not lingering, but where are we on annexation?
The file is on my desk.
Okay. So we know where it's at.
It's getting closer to the, it's getting closer to the top, yeah.
And the reason I ask that is, one of the big concerns that I have is in recent months, we've had a lot of activity in our community. We have two hotels coming up. We have a new build of the Holiday Gas Station. We have this major potential expansion of green tech. And we have had a couple inquiries regarding the multimodal district. And the concern that we have is potential properties in the multimodal district that people may be looking at are not within the city limits of International Falls. So one of the things that I'm hoping for is if we could figure out at least the Donahue property and the multimodal area to put the city property inside the city limits. So in the event that we are to sell some of those properties and get some improvements upon them, we can retain some of the tax benefits of that in the future. I don't know if anything's going to come forward of any of these inquiries, but there's a lot of stuff going on in our community right now and I think growth builds growth. And this would be a fantastic time for us to try to finalize some of those simple ones like the Donahue property, which is our property outside the city, and same thing with the multimodal. And that's the only reason I brought it up.
Well, and we've been in communications with the state. We redid things. We redid the application at their request and sent it in. And now there's a couple other things they want us to fine tune. So hopefully we'll be able to take care of that soon.
Okay. All right. Department heads. Light report was in your packet, council information, fire, rescue, EMS monthly report also was in there. Does anyone have any questions or concerns on those? Hearing none, reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. I, hearing nothing from the council, I just want to clarify one thing for those in the room and for the rest of the council. The reason I voted no today for adding the, or taking the deletion off of the agenda is we only have one meeting a month for the HR meeting and Council Holden had informed me before the meeting, he wanted to move there. And ultimately I knew it was going to get there because it had council support. I'm very certain of it. The reality is, is since we only meet once a month, I wanted to make sure that we had it on the agenda. We were able to discuss it and pick a time of when public or HR was going to be able to meet because this is an important issue that Mr. Manik had spoke about today and it does need to be handled in a timely manner. And I didn't want to have us waiting until the end of July to start dealing with this situation and not be able to address it again until August. So I wanted to make sure that we did set up a special HR meeting that we would be able to handle this one too. So with that being said, had we had a meeting already set up earlier and it was scheduled for let's say this Thursday this week, I would have just been okay with it. But I do think that this is an important issue that needs to be handled and looked at and I'd want to make sure that it's being addressed sooner than later. With that being said, I don't believe we have anything else on the agenda except for audience. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to bring anything forward to the council? Hearing none, our next regular city council meeting is going to be Monday, July 19, 2021. And as I just said, on Monday at 10 o'clock, there will be an HR meeting. And I would like to have that HR meeting have the potential to be closed and have that posted on the, on the announcement that we may close that meeting due to discussing employee situations or however we have to legally put that. Thank you. We have nothing before the council. We're adjourned.